Item number 21, vote to appropriate $1,984,637 from free cash for the fiscal year 2023 capital budget as follows.
Second.
Okay, let me, let me read through them and you can go ahead. Okay. Town hall painting of interior, $10,000. Communication center tower, $100,000. Upgrade telephone system at town hall, $30,000. Police patrol vehicles, $130,000. Police station pavement replacement, $80,000. Police IT computer server, $21,044. Fire administrative vehicle, $67,721. Forest fire truck, $150,872. Fire portable mobile and base radio replacement, $20,000. DPW new 10-wheel dump truck, $320,000. DPW purchase of sweeper, $300,000. DPW purchase of spreader, $240,000. DPW clamshell catch basin cleaner for swap loader, $120,000. Tip construction phase and right-of-way acquisition costs, walk in Hamilton streets, $245,000. Community center windows, exit doors flashing and caulking, $150,000. There we go. Okay. Discussion, Councilor Lazo.
I'd like to make an amendment and cut the forestry truck at $150,872.
There's an amendment and a second. Discussion.
You all set?
All set. All right, Chief.
Good evening, everybody, again. Obviously, the capital items that are presented to you, obviously, the forest fire truck has come up in regards to this. I heard Councilor Lazo an earlier hour or so talking about the forest fire truck that we currently have. It's a 2007 F-450, four-man, five-man cab. It does have a forest fire pump on it. I think the previous fire chief had very good intentions with spending the town's money on it. I mean, the vehicle is appropriate forest fire vehicle, but I think at that time he was tasked at not only getting members to the brush fires down these narrow roads that we have in town. That's why it has a five-man cab. What we've found over the years is that this vehicle does not have a very good turning radius. When it does get into an area where it's thickly settled with brush and leaves and trees, it is not a very easy vehicle to turn around. So, you know, at this point, I think, you know, great intentions on that vehicle's purchase, and it's still going to be used, and we still do use it on an everyday basis when we need it. It has tasks, and that's exactly what the task is. It stays on the road. It can carry five guys, or four guys, we'll say, four guys to a scene. It does still have a brush pump and hose and et cetera and a water tank. This proposal for a new forest fire truck is a truck that's going to replace a '71 Chevrolet. It's a civilian pickup truck that was purchased, I believe, from the Chevy dealership in town here. I'm not sure what the name of it was at the time, but obviously, in the '71, has no airbags, has only a lap belt, has no anti-lock brakes. You know, and then I threw into this proposal also, if we were to sell the '71 Chevrolet and the 1955 Willys Jeep, we could get a little bit of money back for the purchase of the new forest fire truck. The new truck will be built by a manufacturer that builds and engineers brush-type vehicles. I guess my question back to the council is that if we happen to have an incident with this older forest fire truck that I'm trying to replace, something happens with our firefighters or civilian, a brake failure or whatever, I don't want to go on scare tactics, but this truck is 50-something years old. It's 52 years old. Three, I'm three years older than this truck. I get what the process is, but where's the liability behind this if something does happen? I think we need to take the truck off the road and replace it with a vehicle that can actually go into the woods, is the proposal for the four-wheel-drive, regular cab pickup truck, go through brush, mow down smaller trees, do a brush truck that actually can go into the woods and do what it needs to do to lay a line to, from actually the bigger forest fire truck to get into the woods. That is my proposal. This funding, the amount is, the truck is $41,000, the skid unit is $99.7, and then there's $10,000 for radio. You know, again, I expect some questions, but that is kind of my proposal, but I think the liability at this point is really kind of at question. Thank you.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Chief, as always. This isn't the first year you've come up with this. You came up with this in the last couple of years as well, and it's always been shot down. The vehicle is from '71, over 50 years old. I don't know about you, I feel more comfortable having a vehicle that's actually fit and going to be able to run without breaking down and being old, going to handle some of these incidences. So, if you've come multiple times advocating that you have a need for this, that it would be helpful to actually dealing with brush fires in multiple occasions, and I intend to fully support you tonight, Mr. Chief, thank you.
Council Steve.
Thank you. A quick question. How often do you actually use this vehicle?
So, for actual brush fires, we have probably, this season alone, we probably had a dozen, maybe 14 brush fires, but this truck is used universally all around. It can go off to put out fires behind people's houses that they're burning illegally. We have a lot of people burning pallets in their backyards, so this truck is the more appropriate vehicle to bring those, the vehicle over there. I could probably say maybe 50 to 75 times a year that this vehicle gets used. This brush truck, this one I'm proposing, will definitely, definitely be a vehicle that can go into the woods, just like the '71 that we currently have.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilor Lazo.
The '71 was supposed to go bye-bye when they bought the last truck. That was the last chief that came in front of the council and said, "It's an old truck. We got to get rid of it. We can, you know, this, that, and the other thing." And then they bought this, and an F-450 duly, that truck can go just about anywhere. Okay? I own one. I got a '73 diesel, granted, but the bottom line comes down to is, when you look at your capital and you look at the half-to-haves and the nice-to-haves, when you look at Sturbridge and some of the other towns, call mutual aid, there are options, but to spend $150, almost $151,000 on a forest tree truck and then sell me on getting rid of the forest tree truck they were supposed to get rid of, the last purchase of a forest tree truck. And how many forest tree trucks do you need when we ran the town on one for years and years, and we had a lot, a lot more than 14 brush fires in the woods? So, for me, I'm looking at it, I'm saying, absolutely no way. Doesn't hold water, no matter what anybody says to me, because I've experienced a lot of what goes on with these trucks. And, you know, it's in front of us, and vote your conscience.
Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll hold off until after this, but I would like to say something further about the appropriation. Thank you.
Very good. I just want to make it clear, I was not here when that truck was supposed to be traded in. I'm just looking at the best interest of the department with the appropriate equipment that we need. This will give us a forest fire truck that can carry five guys that we currently have, and this will, this new purchase will eliminate two vehicles from the department and also will give us a vehicle that can go into the woods, very maneuverable, and that's my pitch.
Council Steve.
Paul, do you have a quick idea of what the trade-in value for the other two vehicles actually is?
Do they make books that old? I really truly don't know. Maybe, Council Lazo, I would say my proposal in this, in this report is that we should probably try to do auction. We did our own auction when we got rid of two rescue trucks, probably three or four years ago, and we made, I think, I don't want to, Karen may remember, maybe just a little under $10,000 for two vehicles. I can guarantee these two trucks will probably go for more, because Scott will buy them.
I think, I think the Jeep is an antique. I think the Willy is something from World War II.
Yeah.
And I think that would bring, to some collectors, would bring in money, but the other truck, I don't see it bringing in a hell of a lot of money.
Probably not, since it's as old as I am, so I'd be surprised if it's still running.
Anyone else? Very good, we have an amendment on the floor to eliminate the forest fire truck.
Roll call, please.
Very good, roll call.
Council Dow. Council Jovan.
What was Council Dow's vote?
I think he said no. Is that right?
For his amendment, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Big spender. Got more money than me.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
Council Lazo.
Yes.
Council Marquetti.
Yes.
Council Ryan.
No.
Council Steve. And Council Daniel.
No. Motion is passed four to three, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, so the fire truck, forest fire truck is eliminated.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Council Marquetti.
So, through you, I did ask a while back, I asked Ms. Harnoyz for, I'm sorry.
Mr. Marquetti, you have the floor. Council Marquetti.
I did ask Ms. Harnoyz for a list of all the capital funds that we still have in our accounts, and going through it, there's a lot of money sitting there that hasn't been used. Total, all capital's about 14 million. Just in the general fund alone, there's something like, oh, I want to say 5 million or something like that, but the issue that I have with some of these is that, I'll give you some example, the town hall painting interior. Well, we have $500,000 sitting in a town hall account for renovations, roofs, town hall facility, so why are we grabbing more money, spending more of our money today when we have money already sitting there that could be used? Another example is the fire station. There's $55,000 sitting in their account, fire inspection vehicle, new ambulance. I'm going to presume that this is money left over that wasn't spent. The DPW has about $400,000. I'm sure that some of these, their plans are to use them, but right now, it's been sitting in there, and some of these go as far back as 2013. So, I see that the DPW is asking for $980,000 tonight, and they have 400, over 400,000 sitting there. So, my only point is, why couldn't we use, and I've been asking this, to look into it anyway? I'm sure that there will be some that we cannot move over, but there should, I can't see why we couldn't look at some of it to see if we could use the funds. The community center is asking for $150,000 for windows, exit doors, flashing caulking. There's already $85,000 for the community center for the same purpose. So, all I'm asking, and I've been asking this consistently since we first started talking about capital, is that we just take a look at some of the unused funds to see if we could move it over before we start asking for more. And that's all, that's all I want to say right now. I might have some more after. Council Jovan speaks. Thank you.
All right, Council Ryan, you asked first.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I just, I want a point of clarification from the chair. I'm under the, please correct me if I'm wrong, it takes six of the nine to increase it and five of the nine to decrease. So, that means that motion failed because it was only four to three.
Not on capital.
Not on capital.
Not on capital? It's just only on the operating budget?
No.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Very good. Council Jovan.
Thank you. Thank you. To Council Marquetti's point, he has a great point. I think that's something I had said probably about three years ago when we were talking about, we debated in this very hall about, I forget what it was, windows or something for the town hall, and I said, "Wait a minute, you had all these monies lined up here." So, I do concede Counselor Marquetti's point, and it's one of those things, yes. And this is just, I think Karen, he's probably reading off the same one that you had submitted on January of funds that were left over that you sent out to council. So, you know, town hall renovations, we do have $59,278 just in town hall renovations that goes back to FY 2013. We do know there's a corporate project going on, but we don't have, I don't think we've gotten a quote on that yet. So, you are right. I mean, why should we appropriate this capital money if we already have those funds established? To the vehicles, like the fire inspection vehicle, yes, it was on this list, but we, that was because we hadn't paid for it yet, it hadn't come in yet, so some of those items will come off, so we don't really have all that amount of money, because those are, some of these things are earmarked to specific projects. But I do think, you know, you have animal control kennel, $218,000. So, yeah, we do have pockets of projects that were outstanding. It'd probably behoove us to maybe, some of these that we could reconfigure. And again, these are projects, town council, FY 2018, and outside of Council Steve's, you're probably the only one that was here, maybe in fiscal year 2018, right? They allocated at that time $99,154 for town hall rear handicap entrances.
Hasn't been done yet.
For five fiscal years, that money is just sitting there that we haven't used for other purposes.
We could. In fact, I would actually like to know more about where that stands.
So, to that point, I mean, reallocation of funds or cleaning them up, and then, I know I had the conversation through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Finance Director, I know I had a conversation earlier this fiscal year with Ms. Harnoyz about maybe cleaning those up, transferring it back to, and the town manager, I think I ran it by him, maybe take a look at some of those old accounts, close them out, transfer, transfer these monies that we have to stabilization, and then, as a council, come up with a plan about how we're going to allocate, prioritize some of these projects that you have. So, perhaps instead of working off of the old capital projects fund balance, we make a commitment this evening to take a look at that list, get an updated list of what's been cleaned up, and then make a determination, I have a council meeting that we discuss old existing projects, clean that up, reallocate the money, figure out what we're prioritizing, and then clean it this fiscal year, use the free cash from what we have this year, and then allocate the rest to stabilization. But Counsel Marquetti's point is well taken, that there are monies sitting there that could possibly be used, outside of using this free cash. Either way, the money's going to go somewhere. We can make a determination tonight and say, "Hey, $500,000 from this, from this free cash, we'll transfer it to stabilization and try to piggy bank and move monies from an old list," or do it clean tonight, vote our conscience tonight on what we have, and then clean up the old list and move that money to somewhere else. It's all going to be town money allocated to different purposes, but his point is well taken. Thank you.
Council Lazo and Council Ryan.
I concur with Counsel Jovan and Counsel Marquetti. The only thing is, I think maybe that capital money should be put in that new capital account where it's labeled already, let's earmark it, let's keep it there, instead of putting it into a revolving account or stabilization, because it was intended for capital.
Right. Good point.
Thank you.
Could we, I'm sorry, could we make a motion to, we don't have to take action on this tonight. I mean, we could, we could, am I right, Karen? I mean, there's nothing tonight that we have to take action on our capital plan tonight. Perhaps we schedule a meeting where we could look at this free cash allocation and the capital and come up with a plan on how the Finance Department could, could take a look at it, make recommendations in a couple of weeks back to us about how we could clean that up, and to Counsel Lazo's point, capital for capital. So, it's up to you, but thank you. I'm sorry, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, I wanted to ask, because I actually was going through the list, and one thing that came up was that cable had requested initially that they wanted field replacement cameras as part of the capital budget as well, and that's not on this list. And I know they had recommended a change to, or they were going to recommend a change to you about doing some software updates or system updates instead of the field cameras because they were having issues with the system back there. Can you just touch on that, because that's a change from when it was discussed at the subcommittee?
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, through you, I believe we're still on Article 21, which is an appropriation for free cash, and I believe the cable improvements would come out of some of the cable funds, not free cash.
You're right. It was discussed at the same time. My apologies.
Mr. Chairman.
Council Lazo.
Just a quick comment on, on the previous discussion with Counsel Jovan. I would rather work this capital improvement plan now and just use that as capital money for the future because of, you know, let's set our pace now with this money, and if there are, if there are dusty corners, which I remember back when George Shinya, as a counselor, said to John LaFleche, "All these accounts," he dusted out all the accounts, and lo and behold, there was a ton of money that was sitting in all different types of accounts that could have been used for a lot of progressive work on some of the stuff that we're doing now. So, I would rather handle this tonight, confirm it, and let's go back and look at that money that we're talking about.
Either way.
It would be cleaner.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm okay with that. I just, I just don't want to see everything that we're approving tonight, and three years from now, the council is going to say, "Ah, come in and do this," not come in, that we voted on tonight. So, you're just compounding the issue. It'll just be the same thing. So, but I'm okay with it. You want to do it that way? Thank you.
Ms. Harnoyz.
Mr. Chair, if I could, we did go through the capital projects. I'm going to say within the last year or two, and we cleared up a lot of projects. And what you're probably looking at, and I don't have it in front of me, Counsel Marquetti and Counsel Jovan, is you're looking at it at a snapshot in time, where you have to see what, what projects are active, what aren't active. So, I would say that we go ahead and vote on this tonight, and then I'll go back and look at it again, and then we can have, we can have a subcommittee meeting, and we'll look through the balances again and say, you know, if this isn't going forward, then we need to do something with it.
Very good. Anyone else out?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Counsel Marquetti.
Again, through you, and, and like I said, I'm okay with that, but all I can do is go by the list that you sent me, and that's all I can go by. So, I'm not a mind reader, I don't know what's been done, what's been spent. All I can do is look at the list that was sent to me and say, "Hey, we haven't spent this money, so we should utilize it before we ask the taxpayers of Southbridge to pay more to replenish capital." Okay, thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Just as a follow-up to that, Finance Director is correct, I think it was, we did it on a Zoom meeting. We did, we did clear up a bunch of accounts, but there are still some here that perhaps it's time, especially like the town hall type things, and say, "Hey, where are these projects? Are we ever going to do them?" And clean it up, and whatever we can move, we move, but I agree with Counsel Lazo, let's just move. I think that was my original point, let's do it clean, and, but then definitely have a commitment that we do work on whatever we can clean up and what projects, where they're at, and get an update. Thank you.
I have a new suggestion, if everybody's done with that. I'd like to make a motion to amend, to, for a point of discussion, I'd like to cut the fire administrative vehicle for $67,721.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion in a second.
What vehicle are we replacing?
We are not replacing a vehicle. We are taking the 2013 Expedition that currently Deputy Chief Hewitt drives, and we will be taking it and refurbishing some bodywork and doing some radio updates. We're going to be putting this vehicle as a frontline vehicle and taking that, what we call the service truck, the dual-wheel 4550 Homeland vehicle, which is really not a, it was built back in the day by the previous chief as a tow vehicle to tow trailers to any regional response that needed for an MCI or that type of situation. Back when I started, we put that vehicle in as, as the service truck. Unfortunately, has had an accident. It just went back, it went to Hillside today to have some repairs done onto it. The vehicle is much larger than, than it should be for a response vehicle. The deputy's vehicle refurbished will be the first out vehicle for our paramedic. Sometimes when we have one paramedic only staffed, I'll send two people in the ambulance, two basic EMTs in the ambulance, and the paramedic will be the fly car, because generally what's been happening operationally-wise is that when there is only one paramedic on shift, I don't want the paramedic driving the ambulance to the hospital to Worcester, to keep that paramedic out. So, the resource here is to keep the paramedic locally here in town to protect our citizens.
Can the dual-wheel tool truck go to DPW? Does it have any value to them?
I don't know the answer to that. That was an MOA, oh, sorry, Mr. Jim, that was an MOA or an agreement with Homeland Security that that vehicle could be used at any point in time to tow an MCI trailer and a hazmat trailer that we have, that we, I don't, I don't want to answer yes or no on that, but I think maybe it could. We do have the bucket truck that we share between the DPW and, and the fire department. Again, I don't want to answer that right off the bat without checking with Homeland Security and looking at the MOU.
I mean, personally, I, I never understood that truck being at the fire department in the first place, and I know you had nothing to do with that truck, and I know that a previous employee had, I don't know where he came from or whether he was even qualified to be the chief, but the thing's got to start. I mean, we're buying a lot of vehicles, we're expanding vehicles, we put a lot over, capital never, I was never afraid of capital, because it's a one-time purchase, you buy it, and it's done, it's paid for unless we bond it. But when we put personnel in, it's forever. You know, it, it puts a bearing on us every year continuously, but I just wanted to know what this vehicle is replacing, because, you know, unless we're replacing something, I don't want to buy another vehicle.
Chief. So, during the, the short presentation that we had during capital, this vehicle was originally, when we put, when I put it together, was going to be a Tahoe similar to ours, which are still cheaper than the Ford Expedition, which we've talked about in previous years. Secondly, the lead time to get a new vehicle is like 36 weeks, 30 to 36 weeks. So, to order it in July, it will definitely, it won't be here till next year. So, it will give us some time to get the deputy's car refurbished, fixed up, equipped with the appropriate stuff in there, you know, the captain will use it, the lieutenant will use it, and the paramedic will use it that's on duty. I think the third piece of it is that we worked with Chief Woodson, we found a grant that we could get, and we could get $5,000 off if we buy a fuel-efficient economy type of vehicle. So, some of the police cruiser interceptors are those type of vehicles that he's probably going to be ordering, and the deputy and I discussed it at length about getting, instead of getting the Tahoe, getting an F-150, very similar to the inspector's vehicle, which would be fuel-efficient, it would be dual-fueled type of thing, and so we put a lot of extra effort into it, but I think this is the right direction to go for the, for the fire department.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
A quick question.
Counsel Steve.
What are you defining fuel-efficient to be?
I did not hear a word you said.
I'm sorry. What are you defining fuel-efficient to be? I don't think the Tahos or the F-150s are particularly fuel-efficient or any of these vehicles we're talking about.
Fuel-efficient? Right now, I think it goes on my papers, the deputy did a conversion. Currently, right now, the Ford Expedition, 2013 Ford Expedition gets 13 to 18 miles per gallon. The new 2022 F-150 pickup truck HEV six-cylinder, I'll go on and on, but that gives us 20, 23 miles to the gallon. So, obviously, you know, that, that is a cost, and it's also going to be $5,000 off the price of the vehicle. And I do have new quotes, still, we'll be right around the same price to purchase it, the administrative vehicle, whichever way we decide to go. Did that answer your question? Counsel?
Anyone else? Okay, we have an amendment to eliminate the fire administrative vehicle. Roll call vote.
Counsel Jovan?
No.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
Counsel Steve?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
And Counsel Dow?
No.
Motion fails. Anything else?
Can I ask a DPW director, please, about new sweepers and purchase, the sweeper?
Purchase of the sweeper or the spread?
No, the sweeper. What happened to ours? We have two of them.
We have two of them, one's a 1996. It hasn't run since last year. We have spent a good part of the spring just trying to get it operating. It is way past its useful life. Can I ask a DPW director, please, about new sweepers and spread, and purchase, the sweeper?
Purchase of the sweeper or the spread?
No, the sweeper. What happened to ours? We have two of them.
We have two of them. One's a 1996. It hasn't run since last year. We have spent a good part of the spring just trying to get it operating. It is way past its useful life. Sweepers only last, I've heard other departments rotate them out at seven years just because they start to become a maintenance headache. So our 1996 sweeper has not, went out for exactly a half hour of the season before it broke down again. Currently, it is broken down. We're hoping to get it operational again, but it's not reliable. It's not performing its function anymore.
And the second question, the swap loaders, we don't have one?
The swap loader?
Yeah.
This is specifically a, we, we bought swap loader trucks where they slide on and off. So we're looking for a catch basin clamshell that we can put on a swap loader as opposed to the one that we have now. We're having issues with our clamshell that we had because we also plow with it, and it's also very, very old. It's, I could find it here, but I would have to look for a minute. But what the recommendation was, is to not have all that swap loading, well, I mean, not have all that clamshell equipment because there's a lot of hydraulics and everything. We've had problems, they leak, we end up going down, we don't have it anymore. We can't clean the catch basins. By putting in a swap loader, when we're not using it, it gets taken off the truck and gets sit there. The truck still gets to be used as a spreader and a plow. It's just making our existing swap loader trucks more multifunctional. So we're looking to get the clamshell to go on one of our newer Peterbilt trucks.
Counsel Jovan?
Thank you. The question about the sweeper, so it's replaced in the 1996.
The 1996, yes.
And what year is the other, the new, the other one?
You were going to ask me that. Actually, I don't have it here. Oh, wait. No, the years aren't taken off here. I'm sorry. Oh, no, they're not. Sweeper 2011.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
Heather, just a quick question on the sweeper. It's $300,000. I'm not questioning whether it's worth $300,000. My question is, in, there were past years that we used contractors, like just sublet it annually. Did we ever look in an annual contract for, you know, would it, would it cost, would we save money or not? Or is that even worth looking at?
I know prior to me being here, we did do that because I came right, you got the other sweeper right when I came. So I know that analysis had been done in the past, and the determination was that it was more efficient for us to have our own two sweepers going out. I will say this, our requirements for sweeping have increased. So we used to be that we had to sweep all the roads once. Now we have to sweep all the roads twice. So we're putting the double the workload on them also. So we would be looking at it twice the cost.
Thank you.
Counsel Ryan.
I would just, I wanted to add to that because there was questions at General Government about that, Counsel Lazo. And actually, I believe it was Ms. Clemmons who had mentioned that. And I would tend to agree that maybe it's time we do another cost-benefit analysis to see, because of all the increase to labor, would it be more, would it be cheaper and more efficient to have a contract service? Not for tonight's budget, but I think in general, I think that's a healthy discussion for us to have and look and see is it could be cheaper to have someone from the private sector come do it instead of consistently buying expensive machines we have to perform heavy maintenance on sometimes. So.
Not only that, it would free up the man that we have on staff, but again, it's a cost analysis.
Counsel Dow.
Who's fixing those sweeper? Our local mechanic or we?
Our local mechanic.
That they're experts for sweepers? What qualified they are? I mean, I know some mechanic, basic oil change, brakes, tires, change oil.
They have more qualifications, isn't this the basics? And they have been working on these sweepers for a while. But I wouldn't know if there's a place you go in school to be a mechanic on a sweeper. I will tell you that this sweeper itself, it's getting harder and harder just to, you know, we have to go further and further to find the parts. I mean, it's not, it's not young spring chicken anymore.
Did we try our specific company only fixes sweeper to see maybe cheaper to fix it better than spending $300,000?
Well, this, this has been on the schedule to be replaced for years and years and years at this point. It just happens to be that it is actually physically broken down right now also.
Okay. You know, I support you with a lot of.
No, I know. I don't, we have not had any outside companies.
Me personally, what I hear and I see, maybe, I don't know, sitting in the corner. You have any paperwork that was working on, any approved? I'm not, I'm not, don't take me wrong, you know, but I think $300,000. I think that, again.
It's a lot of money. I agree with you.
I mean.
It is also one of the requirements of our stormwater permit that we have to do this twice a year.
And our sweeper, what I see, they're still looking decent. I mean, I understand you use them a lot, but how many mile you have on it? How many hours?
Actually, that's in your paperwork.
Because last five, 10 year maybe, I only see one on the street.
No, it's not on here. And we have to find that backup. We do have, it's, it's got a lot of hours on it. It, it, normally, we go out with two sweepers every year as long as it's not working. It did break down last year. It hasn't been working this year. I told you it was a half hour.
But last year was, I think, what I remember is we don't have another driver. I don't think that.
No, we had two drivers.
Only one was coming out.
Nope. We had two drivers out in the sweeper last year. We have two drivers right now. We could drive two sweepers right now.
We never run it on, on a, on a specific company fixing sweeper, only local mechanic, correct? That's what you told me.
Only our internal mechanics.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the sweeper from the budget.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel Steves.
Um, yeah, through you to Heather. Have we ever looked at the idea of, of multiple community agreements to, to buy a sweeper that we would share with, say, Charlton or Dudley or somebody? Would that even be viable way to do things? Since we were talking about the idea of doing something that would be something, I'd be more comfortable in, in doing a multi, a community agreement with somebody else rather than doing a contractor. But, but I think, I think we should look at both to see which would work better for the community. And has that been like that?
I have never been contacted by any other communities interested in doing any compact like that. I think part of the problem is you're going to want to use them at the same time. When we go out and sweep our streets, it takes us two months to sweep, you know, it's a month and a half, two months every spring.
Yeah.
With two. So we're, we're not going to be done. Our street's going with one right now at the rate we're going for, you know, you're in May, you, you're going to be July, and then you have to start doing it again in the fall. So there's not, everybody wants to do them in the spring and everybody wants to do them in the fall. So there's really not any ability that way. You know what? You, you have a scheduling issue. It's different, you know?
Yeah, I get that. Okay, thanks.
Counsel Dow then Counsel Lazo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The reason why I remove, I'd like to see a professional company for sweeper, look at it and get a report because I think it can be fixed with less, a lot of less money, what, $300,000, and it can be used for.
It's not a question of whether it can be fixed or not. I'm sure it can be fixed. It's a question of when is it going to break down again, and is it going to provide us with the reliable service that we need?
But this sweeper is sitting all winter broken. Nobody look at it. And now summertime, time to sweep. We're requesting another one. I mean, I don't think our local mechanic is, have enough experts on a sweeper. This is my opinion. I'm talking about as a, as a own three, four garages mechanic. It's not like I'm just making, you know, making scene. But I think if you hire a Pacific company for that sweeper, specific mechanic, I think is a way to fix it, less money. What's broken in it? I'm going to ask you.
They have gone through almost everything in it, and that is part of the problem. They can't determine why it's not working.
Because they're not experts. It could be fused, could be anything, could be something wired through by mouse.
It's something in the, in the oil pump system of the hydraulic oil. And they are getting a new one of that and hoping it's going to work at this point because they've gone through everything else.
Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
I really understand what Counsel Dow was saying. An expert in, in, in the field of heavy equipment is just a heavy equipment mechanic. There are some mechanics that just work on heavy equipment, such as sweepers, backhoes, hoses. Then there are mechanics that works on heavy-duty trucks. And then there are mechanics that work on the day-to-day vehicles. There's no question about it. If there's something wrong with it, and they let it sit all winter, that, that's not good. But I will say that this is one of the pieces of equipment that gets a lot of use. You know, there are some vehicles, I mean, when we buy a vehicle, there are some that are seasonally used, which this one is. But the thing is, what it does, it, it's brutal on the equipment, sweeping the streets. So, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of torn. I think Joe brings out some good, good points, but again, not having it during the season is, is, is real bad. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Through you. Lead time, if you, if you were to even, I, I support it because with the MS4 and all that, lead time, we're probably not going to get this till next spring anyway.
Correct.
So we're, we're looking to buy something that we're not going to have till next spring.
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky. With the supply chains and everything.
Yep.
So I, I support it because of the, all the other federal requirements that we talked about today. And here again, we talk about federal mandates that they put in place with MS4 and sweeping and regular sweeping and all that. It's tough, but, because I see in the paperwork that you submitted, there was also paperwork for the 2011 to replace. So I, I, yeah, I, okay, thank you.
One quick question, Ms. Jim, and if we're not going to get this sweeper till whatever, what do we do in the meantime? Do we contract out? Do we get this one fixed? Or can we fix it?
Well, I, like I said, I didn't hear today that it was fixed. I know that they thought the part was coming in, that they were going to try to see if they could get it back on the road. I think after that, then if they can't fix it, if they, you know, we will keep on going. We do have one operating sweeper. We will continue to sweep the roads with the one sweeper we have and make as good a progress as we could. That's all we can do at this point. We can look into contractors and try to find something, or if we can rent one, which is another possibility, which we have done in the past. But right now, there's not any money in our budgets for rental. We'd have to come in front of you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have an amendment to eliminate the sweeper. Roll call.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
Counsel Steves?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
No.
Motion fails.
I just have, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel.
If I can, through you, I just have a quick question. Communication center tower, is that computer system or is that radio communication equipment?
Short version, which is a long story, but I'll be short about it. Obviously, the fire station radio infrastructure, the fire station is going to be moving at some point. The infrastructure for some of our radio antennas is currently sits on top of the fire station. So we have a plan to put all of the communications antennas that are currently on the, the fire station and bring them down to the police station. This also will eliminate some of the smaller antennas with this tower. This will eliminate some of the smaller antennas that are attached to the top of the cupola of the current police station. So this, this tower will be on the side of the building. It's going to be an erected piece of steel. It will hold, right now, I have proposed about six antennas to go on it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have permission from Chief Woodson? Just kidding, Ms. Jim.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Marketti.
I was, thank you, through you. I was wondering why the animal kennel was removed from capital. Although I do realize that that's funding through other sources, but it was on there and now it's not.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The plan right now, previously was at Bay Path, and I think we had the $200,000 there. And I also know that the chief has considerable funding that he's raised outside through the form of donations that should address the construction of this. Part of the problem was, as I said, we were supposed to be on the Bay Path agenda to be done in the last year. And due to no fault of our own, that cannot go forward and they have to put us further on the list. So we went to do it on our own, and we were getting some assistance in the form of some of the bid documents that we need to do as well as an architect's review. And that, for whatever reason, I know the chief's been working on it. We're trying to get those documents. There's been a delay in the architectural review. That's all I can tell you about where it stands right now. But I don't think we're looking for any additional monies for it. And I know the chief is right there. He might be able to comment further, but I believe that's the status of the dog kennel at the moment.
Good evening again. Through you, Mr. Chair. I would say that as of this morning, my, one of the councils has reached out to the engineering company. I've reached out to the architect. We're still waiting to hear from them and their excuses like everybody else is right now. COVID, we can't find staffing, the great resignation, et cetera, et cetera. So we have the money, it's sitting. But I believe, and honestly, I misunderstood you, Counsel Marketti. The question was, why isn't on tonight, on tonight's capital?
Well, I just, I received this tonight when I came here, and it was yellowed out and a zero put there, so.
If I could answer that, I could be wrong, and Ms. Hanoy can correct me certainly. We did not ask for any additional money this year in the capital for the kennel. That's why it wouldn't be on there.
Okay.
Short answer.
All right, thank you. So you don't know when it's going to get built, huh?
As far as when it's going to be built, it was supposed to be put out to bid this spring, and here we are in May and almost June, and we're calling every day, including our elected officials are now calling. So maybe that'll change the status of what's going on with the engineering company in Charlton.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to vote to appropriate those items as stated minus the forest fire truck.
I would request a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. All set? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Will the minutes reflect the change in dollar amount?
I put the change in dollar amount.
Huh?
I put the change in dollar amount for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Item number 22. Vote to appropriate $300,000 from sewer retained earnings for the fiscal year 2023 capital budget, primary pump station replacement, $300,000.
So moved.
Taking.
Any discussion? Very good. Roll call.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 23. Vote to appropriate $250,000 from water retained earnings for the fiscal year 2023 capital budget, polymer filter aid station upgrades, $200,000, engineering, permitting, and design for polymer station upgrade, $50,000.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Very well. Roll call.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 24. Vote to approve the Southbridge Retirement Board's recommendation to increase the retirees' COLA base pay from $12,000 to $16,000 effective July 1, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was recommended three to one at the General Government Subcommittee. There had been discussions. The retirement board came in front of us and gave a brief explanation, as I'm sure they're going to do. And we voted as a committee to recommend the increase to $16,000 because originally they only wanted $14,000. So we, we agreed that, and this would only affect the COLA percentage for that base $16,000. So if somebody.
So if somebody is retired and, you know, is making 50,000, then only that base pay of six, up to 16,000 would get the COLA increase, if I said that correctly. So, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Steves, then Counselor Marketti.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, in the packets, you'll see that there's a, that there's a memo from, um, from them to Yolanda, this Borak, John Borak, whoever that is, from the state, points out how that, how it slight, very slightly changes the actuarial valuation, but it only, it only makes one change, like when you get, when you get down to, it only gets, goes down in several, several years from now where it actually doesn't make, makes any difference really. So, some of them are kind of weird, actually, but I just thought I'd point that out if you, if you didn't get the chance already to see that document.
Counselor Lazo.
So they asked for 14,000 and then our subcommittee recommended 16,000.
Yeah.
I'd like to make an amendment to down that to $14,000.
Like to explain why we did that?
Because that's what they asked for. I'm not Santa Claus on a taxpayer die.
I'm not saying that.
You recognize, please?
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, the retirement board came before the general government and then asked for a modest increase. They wanted to go from 12,000 to 14,000. And I am also on a fixed income. I'm on social security and I get a modest increase. So I had no problem with their request for a modest increase in their pension increase to 14,000. But they weren't asking for 16,000, they were asking for 14,000. So, the town manager also pointed out that if you increase it to 16,000, there's going to be an increase in our OPEB obligation. And I believe the number that you threw out there was approximately $100,000 that you will have to pay towards our liability for OPEB if we increase it to 16,000. And I know that we are, right now, behind on paying into OPEB. So that was another good point, that I thought that we shouldn't be increasing it to 16,000. The other point that I had was, I don't, if you are going to allow a subcommittee to increase a request for, on an agenda item, then I'm going to have to presume that at some point, a future subcommittee is going to be able to decrease a request for.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman.
So I would say on this one, I wasn't, I was in favor of their request for 14,000, but not for their request for 16,000. Thank you.
Okay, the point of clarification.
So the, I did not make this recommended change to the agenda. The, um, retirement board came, went, took that result and changed their recommendation. If, as they explained in the subcommittee, they were trying to be thoughtful as to the town's expenses. However, when we increased it, they also said that that's something they did desperately need, especially with the rising cost of inflation. But I'll let, I would rather let the retirement board speak to this.
My name is Julie. I'm the chair of the Southbridge Retirement System. Pam is the vice chair, Will is our elected official, and Karen Harner is our, our ex-official. Excuse me. We did gracefully accept the 16,000 because we did ask for the 14,000. And I'll have Pam explain and Will explain why we did go back to the board, uh, my board, and we accepted the 16,000.
Uh, if Counselor Steves maybe wants to ask his question and if we could answer it.
Oh, I just wanted, I just wanted to point out first off that, that the proposal to go to 16, I proposed it. Um, and that was simply because of the fact that I thought it made a lot more sense based on the discussion we were having that night, that we're not, we're not talking about giving, giving retirees $16,000. We're talking about the fact that the, the COLA base, which is generally around somewhere around 2% if they're lucky, or I can't remember exactly, there was a, and it's capped to something that's.
3%.
3%, thank you, um, which is significantly under what the current rate of inflation is, although that's kind of, that's always flexible, we never know what that's going to look like. But, I mean, it's a situation where when we're talking 12 or 14 or 16,000, it's, it's not a whole lot of money to be basing a 2% in play, increase on. And as you pointed out, Counselor Marketti, you are based on a fixed income, basically so am I, many of us are. Um, and even though I know, I know mine isn't specifically retirement based income. Um, so at some point, everybody's in that boat. And I wanted, as I pointed out earlier, the memo that we got in our packets for actuarial, actuarial evaluation notes that it doesn't change our actuarial valuation at all until 2020, 2031. And even the numbers after that look a little wonky to me. I, I, I have a feeling they'll change at some point, but the numbers don't seem to make much sense after that. But it's not changed at all until 2031. So, this is simply that gives, it gives the people who are retirees right now a little bit of an extra boost in their, in their pockets so that they can pay the bills that, that the costs of living that are rising well beyond where they already stand, you know, to, that they, that they need, that we're all seeing, the cost of gas and rent and all that other stuff. And I think it, to me, it makes sense. It's a, I think it's a fair deal to the people that used to, that's put in many years for our community. And in many cases, some of these people who are still receiving retirement funds, we're not talking people who are making large sums of money. Uh, we're talking some people have been in receiving retirement since the 1990s. And, you know, so it's, it's not a large sum of money that they're getting.
Ms. Hinois.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just, do you, do you want to speak instead of me or?
Mr. McCall.
I don't, I don't mind. I put my hand up just because that night I, I did some, I was trying to do some math on my, in my head on the fly. And we do have this email from, um, the state to Ms. Alvarado, who works in the retirement office. One of the concerns, you know, I know Counselor Steve's talked about it, but we met the other day, Ms. Hinois and I were talking about this. If you look, um, this is essentially a balloon payment that you see in years 2032 and 2033. Um, there may be a way to address it over a period of time, but when you add up, if you go to a 14,000 COLA base, the increases in 2032 and 33 amount to 2.65 million dollars. If, if you, if we kept it at 12, you'll see at year 2032, it starts to trail off. But if you go to 16,000, uh, for the COLA base, by those increased amounts in 2032 and 2033, you're going to wind up putting in almost five and a quarter million dollars additional in pension contributions. So while the monies may look insignificant, I think there was approximately 200 people, you have to put in enough money, in theory, to generate the interest that's going to be paying out those payouts over the next 10 years. So our contributions should not change for those first years, for the next essentially 10 years or nine years. But then after that, depending upon what you change, um, there'll be a significant amount of money that we're still paying rather than giving a reduction in, in that money which could be used elsewhere. So it, it is a big dollar amount when you go. It almost doubles between 14,000, the COLA base, to 16,000 in those latter years. So it's, it's not an insignificant amount by any means. Now, is that cover everything we discussed?
I think so. Just like, for example, um, Counselor Steve, you were looking at that email. So if you look at 2032, our, um, our payment in, for the 12,000 would be approximately 4.6 million. Under the 14,000, it goes up to 7.2, and then it goes up to 8 million under the 16. That's what we're just trying to say. You know, we're not saying that the retirees don't deserve it, and I think they, they do, but I just want to make sure that all the councilors have all the information as to what the effect actually is on our, um, the, the annual appropriation for the town.
Follow up for that? From the same chart that we're all looking at here, I just want to point out that it bounces up for those two years and then it goes back down again.
Correct.
And where, and then if you look at the differences, um, in 2032, it, the difference between the 12,000 and 14,000 is much greater than it is between 14 and 16,000. The, giving them the little extra boost to 16,000 makes much less of a difference than going from 12 to 14. They actually, they actually, literally, to rephrase that, then, they benefit more by, by getting boosted to 16,000 to, from 12 to 16,000, um, with, with less parallel cost to, to the town as a whole between, for those last 2,000, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Certainly.
Um, so what you're actually doing is, I, I respectfully disagree with the, the town manager. Um, you're actually delaying that huge drop off, uh, in, in your appropriation for one year.
Exactly.
And the, the increase is actually the same average as your increase is from fiscal 23 each year down to fiscal 31. It's around $400,000. If you choose the $16,000 COLA base from, from your 2031 appro, appropriation for a $12,000 COLA base, which is the same for the 14 and the 16, it's a, it's a $400,000 increase. So it's the same increase and you're delaying your huge drop off for one fiscal year. That's what's happening in this schedule right here.
So, if I may, because now I'm not following, but instead of going down to 4 million in 2032, you're going up to 8 million if you go, so that's a 3.5 million dollar difference. So.
You're delaying your drop off for one year. Correct. So you're going from 2031 at 7.6 to 2032 at 8 million. That's 400,000, which is what your increases are between your fiscal years.
Exactly.
From 23 through 31. And then it goes down to 5 million.
Right. But if you don't make those increases, the town isn't having to come up with those millions of dollars. So it, you're saying it's, it's not dropping off, you're delaying it, but you're still paying more. If you didn't take one of the, if you didn't adjust your COLA base, there would be savings to the town of millions of dollars.
In, in.
Two fiscal.
One fiscal year prior.
It's still in fiscal 2033. If we didn't make any changes, it would be a 3.2 million contribution versus an almost 5.1. So again, that's, uh, over 1.5, almost 1.8 million dollars. So I, I just wanted to clarify. That's how I read it, that's how we discussed it. It's, you're not delaying the drop off, you're paying, you're going to have to pay more in those last two years in 2032 and 2033. If you didn't make any change, that money could be redirected elsewhere in the budget. So there has to be money, there has to come up somewhere, um, to make those continued payments, where if we kept our current traject, trajectory, we would be tailing off at the end. Now we're going to level off and stay up, actually go up a little bit and then drop down. So I just, that's my understanding, that's what the documents say, and that's how we've been, I'm not saying yea or nay, I'm just telling you that from what we see, there'll be, you won't be tailing off, we'll just be continuing paying and that cost difference is going to be roughly five and a quarter million dollars. If, if you choose not to do it, you won't have to pay that, but if you go this route in those last two years, over those two years, you'd be paying an additional 5.2 million that you otherwise wouldn't.
Okay.
So this, uh, just to put dollars and cents to it, if I could, um, the difference between the 12,000 and the 16,000 is $10 a month for your retirees.
And please keep in mind, they had an increase in their healthcare this year at 4%.
So we are restricted by law, we can only give a 3% COLA. And yes, Mr. McCall at the subcommittee meeting did, uh, indicate that there was a 4% increase. And remember that when a, when you retire, you graciously, um, decreased the percentage for your active employees, 70, 30 now, rightfully so. And when you retire, it goes right to 50/50. For your healthcare costs.
Mr. Chairman, so I want to make sure we all understand what we're talking about because it gets a little confusing. So what we're talking about is currently the retirees are capped at, their COLA is only up to 3% of the first $12,000 of their pension. So what that amounts to is 3% of $12,000 is $360 a year. If we were to increase it to $14,000, that's $2,000 more of the, of the base, which would be 30 plus 30, $60 a year. If you increase it to the 16,000, it's 30 plus 30 plus 30 plus 30, $120. And again, so that's what we're talking about here, either 60 or $120 of, of their COLA. So the retirees are capped to the first $12,000 currently. If somebody collects social security, they're not capped, it's whatever their social security is, their COLA is based on that. And again, the retirees are capped to up to 3%, no matter what inflation is. Maybe the legislature will address that in the future, I don't know, but it's up to 3%. If currently inflation is what, about 8.3 or 8.5%? The COLA for a social security person is supposed to reflect that. I'm not sure exactly what they gave this year, 5.7 or something like that, but that's partially last year. So we're not talking apples to apples. And again, I want to keep it simple. If somebody right now has a 12,000 pension, they're going to get 3%, $360. If they have a $24,000 pension from the town, they're still going to get $360, 3% on that first $12,000. Or if on 24,000, that comes to a percent and a half COLA, even if inflation is at eight and a half percent. If they happen to have a 36% COLA, they're still going to get $360 on that first 12,000. So it comes to about a 1% COLA. So I just want to make sure we're understanding, the, the COLA isn't the 12,000 or the 14 or whatever. I just want to put it into terms. So these pensions can get inflated, uh, reduced away by inflation very, very quick. 14,000 or 16,000 on the base, that's not dramatic, but it does help them. So, okay, thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, um, Counselor Marketti brought up OPEB, and I'm just wondering, um, through you to the manager, what, what exactly OPEB, how, how OPEB is affected by this?
I was, I was responding to what the town manager had said about our obligation to pay off the pension.
That, any change in this affects OPEB?
No, I think it was, did I say OPEB? I apologize, I meant the pension liability.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear, clear to everybody, that a change in this does not affect your OPEB obligation, okay?
Ms. Hinois.
Okay, if I could, just to kind of, to summarize it, and I just double checked my numbers with the, with the town manager. If the COLA base were to increase from 12,000 to 14,000, which was originally recommended, the, um, the extra amount that the town would pay would be approximately 2.6 million dollars. But if we go up to the 16,000 COLA base, the extra is about 5.269 million. So even though it seems like it's a small amount to retirees, and it is, and it's really important, it's just the, 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 the extra that needs to be paid through, you know, estimating, the evaluation, estimating how long someone will live and, you know, how much they're making on their pension, it really makes a big hit to the town. So just keep that in mind. The 14 is about a 2.6, the 16,000 was about a 5.2.
And just so it's clear, this was a majority vote by the, uh, retirement board. So, um, it is the recommendation of the retirement board, um, to, um, recommend to council that they adopt the $16,000.
And just one more statement, I've been on the board for 24 years and we've never come for, before council to ask this.
Counselor Jovan.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the information about how often this happens. But I, I just want to understand the timeline here. It goes to the general government with a recommendation from the retirement board for $14,000. At general government, you decide, oh, there's a conversation, and then you say, okay, it's 16,000, but to the retirement board, your original recommendation to council was 14,000. Is that correct? fourteen thousand, is that correct? So your original recommendation, yeah, you're coming back saying, yeah, your full board is now recommended sixteen thousand, but your original recommendation when you came to council was fourteen thousand, this is a good number, or whatever it is, that's our recommendation. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that, to, to clarify your point about this was the full rec- vote of the board, but your original vote or recommendation was fourteen thousand, just for a point of information. Thank you.
But when the general government upped it to sixteen thousand, I agreed, I mean, that's my fiduciary responsibility to my retirees to make sure that we're doing the best by them. So of course, I'm not gonna turn it down.
No, I certainly respect that, but you came to the council with the original recommendation of fourteen thousand dollars, based on your meetings, your review of COLA and all that. It's, hey, fourteen thousand, and council says, and I understand, I respect it, hey, our retirees, let's kick it up to sixteen thousand. That's a huge financial implication too, on both ends. I, I respected that, you know, it's a small amount retirees, but it's also the obligation of the town too, so we have a fiduciary responsibility to every taxpayer as well, so it's, it's, it's a tough concept, so, thank you.
Counselor Lazo.
I too fear the same. Yeah, I was kind of shocked the way it came out, that it was fourteen, we made it sixteen. I came here and I was, I was gonna vote yes, and I'm saying, you know, our retirees need to kick up, but I didn't have all the information from, that we got, and I thank you for your information and, and the, the town employees. But to me, a compromise of fourteen, I mean, we've got some councils up here that would give the town away, okay? You can tell by their voting record that they'll just give, 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 because they don't have to probably pull the wagon, so to speak, as much as some of the other people. So for myself, I mean, in looking at, I don't want to hand the future Southbridge a five-million-dollar hit and say, oh, those guys back then did it. So for me, I'm, that's why I'm recommending fourteen. I want to give you exactly what you asked for, and I cannot put the red suit on and, and, and say automatically, let's just, let's up it to eighteen. I think you're worth it. Exactly. And I'm not mad that you take it, because you should, but I'm just saying as a counselor, we, we have to look out for all the taxpayers. We've got, you saw what we voted tonight, just in capital improvement, no mind the budget. And I'm sitting here and going, this bubble keeps doing this, with all the good things that we're doing, but when it bursts, some of the councils are not gonna be here to cut the ten firefighters in, thank God. I lived that back in the day. So for me, I'm a little more concerned about this, this spending that we've been on for the right reasons, but affordability is gonna kick in at some point, and then you're gonna see the massive cuts, and everybody go, oh, how can you do this? I saw it, it's terrible. So that's why I, I stand behind my fourteen. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hanoy.
So I'm the one who's been kind of bringing this to the forefront of our retirement board, because it's obviously a big issue. I mean, it, it's brutal to those retirees and to the employees, because they're gonna be retirees, they're part of it. So I brought, I originally tried for a larger amount than the fourteen thousand, and to the credit of the board, they wanted to bring you a number that was palatable, that didn't seem overly ambitious. Fourteen thousand dollars isn't overly ambitious, but they're, we're as conservative as you guys are. You all are. So we settled on that fourteen thousand. Between that time and I think the time that we had the general government subcommittee, as you all know, I'm, I'm a resident now of Webster. On the Webster Town Meeting, they were voting, the citizens were voting to increase it from sixteen thousand, which they had voted, they, they went from twelve thousand to sixteen thousand, I think it was in two thousand and twelve, and at the town meeting two weeks ago tonight, they were voting to increase it from sixteen thousand to eighteen thousand. And I mentioned it to our board, and Webster's a very conservative town as well, but, you know, thirty dollars per thousand doesn't amount to very much of a COLA in these days. So I just wanted to bring that forward. So they brought the fourteen, we all brought the fourteen thousand, but we were thinking, we were being very, very conservative, very, very conservative, and that's just really not a realistic number in, in my mind, so I just wanted to tell you where it came from.
Anyone else? Very good. We have an amendment on the floor to amend the amount of sixteen thousand dollars to fourteen thousand dollars. Roll call.
Counselor Ryan?
No.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
And Counselor McKee?
Yes.
The amount is amended to fourteen thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have.
We now, we now need to vote on the original motion with the amendment. Roll call vote.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
And Counselor McKee?
Yes.
Seven oh. Item number twenty-five, vote to accept fiscal year twenty-two counsel on aging formula grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs in the amount of thirty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-eighty dollars for dates of service July one, twenty-twenty-one through June thirty, twenty-twenty-two, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, this came to EHS favorable. It's a formula grant, it's based on the census, it was based on the census of two thousand and ten, not the new census, it's based on the number of citizen, another, of residents that meet the age requirement. And again, the late, Counselor McKee had brought up a question about what about the dates, were these the correct dates, because it ends in twenty-twenty-two? It is correct, because they were late in getting the grants out, so. That's from EHS Subcommittee.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-six, vote to ratify the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Auburn, Charlton, Oxford, and Southbridge to consolidate formerly their Chapter one-fifteen operations to promote efficiencies, to establish and operate the South Central Massachusetts Veteran Services, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, this was before the EHS Subcommittee voted favorably to recommend the full council, is the intermunicipal agreement, again, for veteran services, which is Keith Roberts is our veteran service officer, we provide services to those additional towns on an agreement basis, and they reimburse us, those towns reimburse us for the services that we provide. And it is, as Finance Director Hanoy's mention goes to local receipts, which was a question that Counselor McKee had.
Very good. Any discussion? Counselor Lazo.
Was Counselor Adams in favor of it? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-seven, vote to approve the proposed job description for the town engineer assistant position.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it was recommended three to one by the general government Subcommittee.
Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Motion passes. Item number twenty-eight, vote to approve the proposed job description for administrative assistant one slash inspector S-ten.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Ryan.
It was recommended three to one by the general government Subcommittee.
Discussion. Counselor Steve.
I just want to clarify that, as I recall, this, this particular post is one that's already exist, and it's just kind of updating the job description to take into account the stuff that she already does, so. We're not hiring anybody new.
I, I heard bits and pieces, I, because I think he answered the question.
As I recall from GenGov, meaning this was simply a job description, updating the job description to take into account some of the things that, that she already does, we're not hiring anybody for this job, it's already there.
That the position, that the position does, okay, thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Motion passes. Item number twenty-nine, vote to approve the addition of the town engineer assistant position to the salary schedule one, grade P slash T-seven.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Recommended three, one by the general government Subcommittee.
Very well, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Six one. Item number thirty, vote to approve the addition of CDBG slash Economic Development Coordinator to salary schedule one, MS dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this one was recommended four to zero, because it's just adding the position to the schedule, it already exists, it's already been filled by Ms. Dean, i- it's just to add it to the schedule.
Any further discussion? Counselor McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, my only question about this is that this position is eighty-seven percent funded by CDBG, so is that going to have any effect on this whatsoever?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, now that I am aware of this, this is just as Counselor Ryan indicated, we moved her into that step position when we created the position, but we didn't add it to the S-one last year when we did it. But as far as I know, it shouldn't change the funding.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Counselor Steve.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the, the version that I have in front of me in my pa- in my electronic packet doesn't include her. It's, it's not listed in here. I may have a slightly older version, but.
It's in the schedule.
I'm looking at the schedule.
It's, it's on the schedule, it may not be highlighted, but it, if you look, if you look across at MS nineteen, it is there, it may not have been highlighted, it's on page forty-three of the electronic packet.
Oh, okay, I see it, yeah, okay, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Item number thirty-one, vote to approve the addition of administrative assistant one slash inspector to salary schedule one, S-ten.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it was recommended three to one.
Any discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Six to one. Motion passes. Item number thirty-two, vote to approve an access agreement, I'm sorry, vote to approve an access easement on parcel twenty-seven dash one dash one and parcel forty dash one dash one owned by the town of Southbridge in order to get a water source to two-twenty-five Dresser Hill Road.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this was recommended by the Subcommittee, I just want to give a brief synopsis, I got an email on this from, from Mr. Corbett requesting that this be put on my agenda, the, I messaged it, I forwarded it to the town manager, and it was subsequently brought up. And after reviewing, after that meeting, it, it's quite regular that easements come up on the general government Subcommittee agenda, so this is pretty par for the course.
Counselor Lazo.
I beg to differ with the previous speaker, this is an issue that should have went to DPW first, because we dealt with these issues before with easements. I agree, it does go to general government probably after DPW. The question is, when the DPW issue comes in on water, because I hear that they're not looping this water line, which has nothing to do with an easement, it has to do with our own bylaws and regulations, where when we went to build the high school and we ran the water line from the sewer plant up to the new high school, we were told, absolutely not, you have to loop the water line, that's the law. And we ended up looping the water line from the new middle high school down to Cotton's, which is a DPW bond, all the way down Golfwood Road, because of stagnant water and what happens with it. So when this came up, I thought it should have went to DPW, it didn't, it went into the, the logistics of the actual easement, which would probably be more of general government. So for myself, my question is, if they're not looping the water line, or are they looping the water line?
So I could give you a whole discretion about why we don't loop water lines anymore, but.
Do you know how much money we could have saved on the high school?
You could have saved a lot of money.
And we had enough usage at the end of the water line.
But, that's not the discussion. This line actually isn't going to be active, it's gonna be what we would call a dead leg, because we don't want the water to be sucked up to the high school of being not used, not contaminated. The water is there for firefighting purposes only, it will have a quick connect at a hydrant, at a location right at the water, at the wastewater treatment plant, they'll be able activate basically like turning on a hydrant, but the water will be flown out at their site, which is a thousand feet away. We didn't want the dead water to be in there, causing a potential backflow issue and contamination issue. So those issues had already been discussed with the water department and myself before this solution was ever brought to general government, of how this would be done. This is for firefighting purposes only, there will be no regular usage on this line.
Mr. Manager.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Ms. Blakely, I'm kind of asking this question out loud, but I think I may have neglected to tell my assistant, but I think you and I had a discussion that this is a, it's not a full easement we're voting on tonight, it's really the concept, because they wanted at least a commitment from the town, so they could go forward and spend the money, they wanted, you know, essentially a, a preapproval, because they have to go spend money to do the actual easement and then come back and get that actual easement. These were some conceptual drawings. So tonight, we wouldn't really be voting on the actual easement, it's more the conceptual plans or preapproval, I don't know how best to.
I, I would say a conceptual agreement to enter into an easement.
Counselor Steve is next.
I was kind of gonna say what the manager just stated, just to clarify that the whole point of this is to bring it back to GenGov, when we actually have the text, the legal text of the easement, which, in which case, I would like to move to, to amend this to read, vote to approve the conceptual agreement for an access easement with full text to come in the future. So to just clarify that that's, that's actually what we're doing here, because this is not, I don't want it to come, come forward later and say, well, oh, we voted approved the easement, no, we have not. That's not the intent.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second for an amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Ryan.
I, I had my hand up before, I just want, I want to make also a, a kind of a clarification on this. You know, if anybody, the agenda was posted properly, no one ever emailed me, contacted me to let me know, I want this on my agenda, it should go on DPW agenda. It was the night of the general government meeting, it was brought up in a last-minute snafu to be like, hey, gotcha, you didn't consult with me. When I went through the process and explained that, hey, it got emailed to me personally, if you look at the letter, it's addressed to me personally, I forwarded it to the manager and then had it put on my agenda. Everyone had the opportunity to see it, and then they wait until we're in the moment, we're being recorded or in a meeting, to ask, you can always contact me and let me know, hey, actually, I think this should go on my agenda, but no one's ever done that. So I'm not gonna stop the good work that we need to get done, because people want to pull logistical snafus at the last minute. It's just not the way this process should work. Thank you.
Counselor Lazo.
If a developer came to Southbridge, we would not have to loop a line. Or is this a special situation?
This is a very different situation, because of the, it's only for fire flows. There's not a usage.
But once you bring water to it, and this comes out of the hemoclock one-on-one town engineer, if you want a water line out there.
Mr. Lazo, I will talk to you about why we do, won't do this for water age purposes, unless we know that there's enough usage. We won't loop lines any longer unless we can determine that there's a usage.
I can't support this, thank you, because of looping the line.
Counselor McKee, then Counselor Jovan.
Well, you, Counselor Jovan, if you want, he had his hand up first.
So to the previous speaker's point, I certainly understand his concerns with looping the line, but I, I'm looking at this, this easement is gonna say a dry water, it's no different than a dry hydrant that you have in some towns, correct?
Correct.
So it's gonna be this one line that's gonna go to this piece of property, and if there's a fire, it just simply gets turned on, it's not for drinking water, it's not for any other use on this piece of property, it's a dry, essentially dry hydrant that we, the water source is just gonna be a hydrant that we have this deadline, you have a fire, you activate the line, that's it.
That's it.
Can't be used for drinking water, potable water, anything. Okay. I, I understand Counselor Ryan's point, because it has happened at other subcommittees, it's a process thing, and I agree, we shouldn't be blind-sighted, the agenda's posted, if you have a concern, pick up the phone, call that chairperson and say, hey, this better, should have. have gone to DPW. How can we fix it? How can we cure it? And not let the process go on. So if this is just a preliminary, hey, they're going to have an expense about putting in the permit and all this process, then I certainly understand it. So thank you. Thank you, DPW.
Counsel Marketti.
My computer's dead. We've been too long.
Counsel Marketti, then Counselor, Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I wasn't trying to make a big deal out of, out of going to general government. I certainly support it. I want to help this business owner get the water that he needs. I didn't even get my packet until just before the meeting, so it wasn't emailed to me. I came to the town hall, picked up the packet. That's when I was, when I saw it on the agenda. I simply asked for a clarification, I guess, about the way we do it. I simply asked, should this be on DPW? My feelings aren't hurt. I wasn't making a big snafu out of it. I nearly got my head bit off over it. I'm not, I'd have no problem with it. If you look at the record, I voted in favor of it, so I had no problem with it. I just asked a, should it go on DPW? That's all I asked.
I always appreciate advancing on this text.
Well, like I said, I didn't even get the packet until just before the meeting. They used to get emailed to me the day before, but I didn't even get anything and I came up here and got my packet. And there it was, on the agenda. But again, I support it. It's a good idea. I want to help this business owner get his water. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. A few questions. What kind of activity on that property? It's...
That property has been approved through Planning Board to have large-capacity battery storage for storing extra capacity from the solar fields. So it's a big battery storage and it will store the capacity and then allow it to slowly go back out. It's kind of a newer technology that's coming around.
Do you have any utility there built in to use?
Meaning power.
Like a building in...
There's no, yeah, there's no other business...
Like any utility to be in use? They need water? If they need water to personal use, where do they get the water from?
There's not going to be a lot of, there's not going to be people, like one person on that site, so...
So it doesn't recommend when you have a business or something, you need like a manager room, example, like a bathroom?
I don't know if Eric can answer this better than me. I haven't looked at the plans and I've been looking at them from a water standpoint, but not from a...
So I'm sorry, through you, Chair. The project is a standalone battery storage unit, which will be connected to the grid. It will be fed from solar panels or from wherever else we generate power. And in times of need, it will be fed back into the grid, just like you do with solar panels, just like you do with any other power generation. These are trailers, essentially. They're thirty-foot-long cargo containers, essentially. There is no staff present unless there is an emergency and then staff will be present. The system is fully automated. The operator will be able to, even on their cellphone, if there's an issue, shut down one of the units. If there is an issue, nine-one-one is automatically notified and the appropriate agency, in most cases it'd be Fire, would be coming out to the site, hooking up the dry line and then flooding the containers. There's not, the purpose of the dry line is to contain a fire. It's not to put a fire out. I don't know if you guys have ever seen lithium-ion batteries. When they burn, you're not putting them out. That's just is the reality of things.
One more question. Who's going to pay to extend that water line?
They are. They're paying for everything, the easement work, all of that. They're paying for everything. They're doing the surveying, the putting it in, and the connection fee. And they will pay a connection fee forever just to have the line there.
So it's not costing the town anything?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, we'll get taxes on it.
Counsel Ryan.
That was my, that was my comment. We'll be able to get taxes on that money, that property that's been eased over. So because now it's being used for commercial use again, we can tax it. So it's kind of a win-win-win for this, you know, it's a requirement of the fire permit in order to have, to have this water line put in for emergency use. Otherwise, it's going to be independent, running its own thing, as Heather said, storing energy from solar panels. So that way, they can be used at night, the energy can be used at night. It's a pretty simple, it's a private business venture. The town's going to make money on it. Win-win.
Counsel Lazo.
So they're not going to have any bathrooms? They're not going to have any running water on-site? I understand that. Now, this is an electrical service of batteries, which I already heard what they do and what they are, and we're going to have water there to put electrical fire out. I, it doesn't make sense to me. You know, did our fire department put that stipulation on?
It's actually a stipulation.
Say no more. I already know where it came from. Thank you very much. Ridiculous.
Counsel Steve.
I actually had a question through you, through you to Eric specifically, that was brought up a second ago. And I just wanted some clarification on, if these people are not going to have any staff there on-site, how far away are they going to be if an emergency occurs? What kind of timeframe are we talking about?
I don't have an answer for you, Counsel. I'm sorry. Like I said, most of this is a remote situation where they actually don't need to be present.
Except if an emergency happens and it's like right down the street from our sewer plant.
Correct.
Or neighbors.
Again, the appropriate authorities will be notified if there is an issue and the system itself is designed to shut itself down so that there is no need for an operator on-site.
I'm not all that sanguine about mechanical things doing what they're supposed to be doing, but that has, but honestly, that has nothing to do with the easement issue. I should have said that at the planning board meeting.
I will let you know that they're based out of Worcester.
Okay, that's good to know.
Very good. We have an amendment to the motion. Any further discussion on the amendment?
What was the amendment motion? Oh, that was my amendment.
Any further discussion?
What is the amendment?
Vote to approve the conceptual agreement to enter into an access easement with full text to come in the future on parcel twenty-seven one dash one and parcel forty dash one dash one owned by the town of Southbridge in order to get a water source to two twenty-five Dresser Hill Road.
Okay. Have you noticed that? All those in favor?
Of the amendment, yes.
Of the amendment?
Yes.
Opposed? One opposed. Okay. Now, to the motion, the main motion, any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Six to one. Motion passes. Item number thirty-three, vote to approve using excess funds in the DPW salary and wage account zero-one-four-nine-nine dash five-one-one-zero-zero-zero to hire for the new position of maintenance man, equipment operator included in the fiscal year twenty-three budget contingent of funding of the position. The cost to fund the new employee from May twenty-four to the end of June would be five thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty cents for six weeks, based on the current union contract. This was postponed from the May ninth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Counsel Marketti.
This was on my, I'm sorry, I guess this was on mine. It was voted three to one. The only issue that I have with it is that all hiring, every time we hire somebody, they need to come before the town council for a vote. And so far, on this position, there's been no, no name, no resume, nothing, so that's my only objection to this at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Just so that we're clear, what we're attempting here is to fill the position for the balance of the fiscal year. That is why it was not to, this is, excuse me, to fund from tomorrow to the end of the fiscal year. We have a candidate that we would like to bring in. To Ms. Marketti's point, it does say in the charter, although I was told that it hasn't really been utilized. The manager points the DPW director and on the recommendation of the DPW director appoints the DPW. We do that for the police and fire and we generally bring those candidates in. During my time here, I was told that historically, we didn't bring a lot of the DPW candidates in. I know that was part of the discussion. So it wouldn't be until such time that we actually bring the candidate forward for recommendation. Now, we could go back and say to this person that we have the funding for the balance of the year. We could hire you between now and the end of the fiscal year. If that person were just inclined to accept, we would then come back with the recommendation and go before the normal process. So that's why there's no resume here this evening.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Item number thirty-four, vote to approve applying for the one-stop-for-growth for the following grants: Mass Works, Mass Development Initiative, Urban Agenda, Brownfields, and Underutilized Properties, all one-hundred percent funded, whose projects are outlined in the supporting documentation and allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Dean.
Hi, good evening. If I could just give a quick update since the Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting, we've gotten from Wind Development some updates on the cost estimate for the Mass Works project and also additional information. I was unaware, but they've already been told by the state that they would likely, we would likely be eligible for somewhere around five to six hundred thousand dollars for the Mass Works grant. And so when going through the cost estimates for the items that were proposed, we had to remove the rail trail access and, and we're not going to include water and there's only going to be a small portion of the paving. And so this was all prompted, Counselor Steve smartly asked, why can't we include the entire water pipeline if this is a Mass Works-funded project to offset the town's costs? Unfortunately, again, they've had this indication from the state that that wouldn't be funded, that much money wouldn't be funded. And so at this point, it is complementing what we will be doing on East Main Street for construction. The water upgrades will have approximately a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars worth of work that's covered under the Mass Works. And then the additional, you know, up to six hundred thousand dollars will be complementary to that. It will be, again, the sidewalks. It will be additional signage. We're even asking the engineer to look at, should we consider an additional RRFB on the opposite end of the parking lot? And it will be the fencing. We did write into the grant, or Wind Development's consultant who they hired, Wes Mass, wrote into the language of the application that the maintenance would be on the property, on Southbridge Franklin Realty Associates, excuse me, going forward. So it would be fence along our property, therefore, our town insurance would cover our liability. However, the maintenance would be covered under a maintenance agreement for Franklin Realty Associates to take responsibility for. So that is just one of the five applications I just wanted to give you a quick update on. Otherwise, if you were able to see the Planning and Development Subcommittee or read the supporting documentation, nothing else has changed. It's all due next Friday.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was, I'm in favor of fixing the sidewalks down there, so I fully support this. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing it forward. And I also thought it was a good presentation by the owner of the, the building on Main Street here. Is Mr. Cormier bought that? He did a pretty good job explaining what he wants, ideas that he has for the place, so, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
It's getting kind of late, so I don't want to drag it on.
Yeah, and not that I do either, but I'd love to be able to share information as you is now. Two oh five Main does have a brewer who's interested in touring both two oh five for potential small-plate tapas bistro-type style and for, we're actually touring them to another facility, larger facility for a large brewing area. And that was all thanks to Eric and his effort, reaching out to the Brewers Guild of Massachusetts.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Item number thirty-five, vote to approve the DPW transfer request for one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from Facility Improvements Account Number six-one-zero-four-five-zero-dash five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-two-two-five-eight-five to Water Facility Paving Improvement Account to repave areas at the water facilities. A new project number will be issued by accounting.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This passed four to zero. Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thirty-six, vote to approve the snow and ice transfer request for overtime, Snow and Ice Account Number zero-zero-one-four-nine-five-dash-five-one-three-one-zero-zero in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-six cents and Special Services Account Number zero-zero-one-four-nine-five-dash-five-two-nine-zero-zero-zero in the amount of eighty-three thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents for a total amount of one hundred thousand dollars to Road Paving Construction and Reconstruction Fund Project Number six-four-eight-four-three to increase available funds for road improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was passed four to zero.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number thirty-seven, vote to approve the water transfer request for twenty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-one cents from Equipment Capital Account Number six-one-zero-four-five-zero-dash-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-two-two-five-eight-one to System Capital Account Number six-one-zero-four-five-zero-dash-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-two-two-five-eight-zero to cover additional costs associated with water system expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was passed four to zero.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item thirty-eight, amendments to Stoppage zoning act to change the following. A, changing three thirty-three East Main Street through five oh five East Main Street from manufacturing to general business. B, changing one-six-and-twenty-eight Sandersdale Road and map forty-four lot seventeen from manufacturing to general business. C, changing twenty-three, twenty-seven, thirty-one, and thirty-five Golf Street from manufacturing to R two. D, changing thirty-nine Old Woodstock Road from manufacturing to R two. E, changing seventy, seventy-eight Genescent Street from office research to R two. F, changing map forty-four lot twenty-nine and thirty-seven Kingsley Street from office research to R two. G, changing seventy-two Doughty Street and map forty-four lots forty-seven, fifty-five and fifty-six Doughty Street from office research to manufacturing. H, changing sixty-six, seventy-three, ninety-four, one oh five, one twenty-one, one twenty-six, one thirty-four, and two thirty-four Ashland Avenue from office research to manufacturing. Second reading, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Anyone have any discussion on this? No? Very good. We'll move on, please, to, we'll move on, please, to item, to agenda item thirty-nine, Counsel's Forum. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much tonight. It just, Counsel Adams isn't here tonight, so I thought, just remind everybody that Memorial Day's parade is next Monday, the thirty-first, at ten a.m. out in front of the town hall. Thank you.
Very good. That's a good, good announcement. Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick one. I just wanted to remind everybody that on Tuesday, the thirty-first, at seven, the town council forum is going to be here in the chambers or broadcast on Southbridge Cable Access. We're going to, primarily going to be focused on the county council candidates, the five candidates, but the... but the last few minutes, we'll also be giving the school committee candidates a bit of a chance to just talk a little bit about why they're running, because, but there's no opposition there, so they're not actually part of the forum per se. And that's all I had.
That's all you have? Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just, I'll be brief. I also was at Beautify Southbridge. That was a really nice time. We had 75 to 100 people come out, which was one of the highest amounts of people I think we've had come out for Beautify Southbridge. Green Meadows, I know, did a huge team of people, and a whole bunch of businesses were grouping up and doing teams. It's nice to see all these citizens stepping up and not just talking and talk, but, you know, when we need to pick up trash, they're there to pick up trash. They care about their community. So I thank everybody who volunteered. I thank the Health Department for organizing it. It was a great event, and I look forward to next year.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the Health Department. Our, did a great job. I think the turnout with the students and the staff from Southbridge High School was, was exceptional, and I think the residents that helped out did a fantastic job. The town was, I couldn't believe how much trash they picked up, I'll be honest with you. I thought it was overwhelming, but they did a great job. Thank you very much.
Very good. Counsel Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I missing something here? Something on? Air? Something? Something I don't know about? I feel some like a breeze, like a cold air coming down.
You have the air handlers on.
It's just the evening air going through the air handling.
I can, I can provide you air conditioning in the winter and heat in the summer, but that's about all I can do.
And another thing, I want to say something to Mr. Lazo, my friend. He keeps saying when I speak, "Give, give, give money away." I believe you have to keep up to date on the technology, on everything. It's like you have an old computer, and you say, "It's still working, but I don't want to get a new one." You try to save money, and everybody ahead of you, and you're still watching the old computer when it's running, when it's going to move on. It's not about give. I came to this country 24 years ago. I have zero. I slept on the street. I'm going to talk about my personal life for a second. If I want to sit and say, "I don't want to spend money. I don't want to do this," I wouldn't be where I am now. You have to invest, to improve, and to move forward. That's why all these years, the 24 years I live in this town, still where, where we are right now, because all the old councilors, they don't want to spend money and make residents believe we're not going to raise the tax, and look where the town is now. But, let me finish. The floor is mine. But if you improve thing in the way down the road slowly, we wouldn't be spending all this money right now. We'd be up to date on a lot of thing. It's not like I give, 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 no. I'm trying to do the right thing. I could be wrong, but with my experience in life, I think you have to spend to improve, to make, and to make things different and better, and not being behind everybody already ahead of you. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Jovan.
Yeah, just real quick. One, I just wanted to, Heather, I wish you the best of luck in Sturbridge. I know this is your last week here with us, so I want to thank you for all the help you were to me in my tenure as chair and all the work that you've done for the town of Southbridge, and wish you the best in the neighboring town. So thank you very much. And on that note, also, I had a local business owner, I was getting coffee the other morning, and he's, he owns a lot of property in the town of Southbridge, and he wanted me to convey to the DPW that he hasn't seen Southbridge look as, as, as well as it does this year. He said that the DPW has done a great job in sprucing up the common. I've heard a lot of compliments, so to your department, going out with a bang with a lot of compliments on the way the town looks. So thank you very much, and the best of luck. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Manager.
I also wanted to echo what Counsel Jovan said. In an effort to keep things brief this evening and focusing on the budget, I neglected in my announcements to, to wish Ms. Blakely well in her future endeavors. She'll be sorely missed, but I will say, I've only been here just under two years now. I've enjoyed working with her, working on these projects, getting to know her, and we have some big shoes to fill around here without her here. And again, she's been great in these last few weeks helping us. I think there's a couple of things she's still going to contribute on, but a lot has been accomplished. I know it isn't always easy, and, and, you know, there are a lot of things that we can be doing better, but we've done a lot in these last couple of years since I've been, you know, the 18 months I've been here. But Heather's been here for almost a decade, and she's made a lot of valuable contributions. And again, thank her. I want to thank her and wish her well.
Very good. And I echo those sentiments, definitely. Item number 40, discussion of the next meeting date, Monday, June 6, 2022, 7:00 p.m. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.[1784.23]